This is a bylaw to amend the official community plan. It's file number 1950, change the land use designation from high street mixed use to urban residential. And to read it off here is that this public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 890 Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council. And all persons present who believe that their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. If you wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw, you should commence your address to the council and meeting by clearly stating your name and address, and then give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. And again, this is OCP Amendment bylaw number 2086, 903 Farrell Road. And it's just changing the parcels from high street mixed use to urban residential. Mr. Strachan, are you going to do any presentation on this?[82.23][88.73]- [Inaudible 00:00:88]
It is an OCP amendment to redesignate a property from its original designation, or sorry, back to its original designation. This is an application set up for a property owner. The property was redesigned last year as part of our resuming an OCP amendment application to build a brewery on that site. The application was withdrawn, however, the OCP had already gone through at that point. Property owners asked to return its OCP designation back to its original designation, and that's what this bylaw is to do. We did receive one response, which was from the CPR, which is their standard response, warning the municipalities about having residential development adjacent to the roadway. Thank you, Your Worship.[136.03][136.03]- [Inaudible 00:01:05]
Is there any comments from the public on this, on this OCP amendment bylaw? This is OCP Amendment bylaw number 2086, and it's 903 Farrell Road. Is there any comments from the public second time on this OCP Amendment bylaw? Any comments from council or staff? This public hearing is for OCP Amendment bylaw number 2086, 903 Farrell Road, and we're changing the property from high street mixed use back to its original zoning, which is urban residential. For third and final time, is there any comments from the public?
Just one comment.
Yes, sir. Your name, sir?
Donald Pocawell, 919 Farrell Road. Now, the properties, I got this context mask here, and it's all the properties indicated on 903, up to, including, up to the Farrell Road. So I'm just wondering if that road is properly located in the right spot, and is it a proper road to start with?
Any staff can comment on that?
Your Worship, the road is, is not entirely within the road right away. And in terms of it being a proper road, it doesn't meet our subdivision bylaw requirements for the width of a road, which is generally between 16 to 20 meters. I believe this road in places is 10 meters wide or less. What we do in these situations is these are existing parcels. If there was a subdivision or other development activity in there, we would look to see if it's appropriate to widen the road out. If it's not, the city will effectively deal with the road as it stands.
So basically, that may have been the standard for that section count when that road was built, whenever it was, 70, 800 years ago. And as the design guidelines change, or the bylaws change on subdivision bylaws, it wouldn't meet it. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Pocawell?
Uh, no, that road was built in the mid-eighties. Till that time, we were using railroad crossing at Fourth Street to access my property, two properties adjacent to me, as well as Farrell's trailer park. That short extension was built in the mid-eighties to join up with where the location of the museum is right now.
Okay.
And just this one parcel of land that reaches over, now is that, is that part of, part of the property in question? Or is that still a road allowance for Farrell Road?
Do you know which area you started with, Mr. Strachan?
Your Worship, the portion of property to the north of Farrell Road is, is not within the application, just the area shown in blue.
Yeah, well, that area, that one area shown in blue, I believe is part of the road areas if the road were to be built there.
Your Worship, as a form of future rezoning, if this property were to rezone, as was the previous rezoning application, the city would be requesting dedication of roadway for the extension of that road. And it was part of the previous application. You are permitted under two circumstances to ask for more dedication, one is a rezoning, the other is a subdivision. It would be a part of an OCP designation bylaw.
So basically what he's saying is that if there was future development over there, we would have the right to take part of that property and make the proper road with...
Yeah, okay, that's...
Does that answer your question, Mr. Pocawell?
Yeah, that'd be fine, yeah. Yeah, no, I just was wondering if that, that one parcel land that is actually showed in blue is part of your proposed development properties?
That, that is the property we're talking about, and basically what we're doing is where the owner of the property has asked it to be reverted back to the, the use that it was prior to the change before that. Because the brewery was looking at going there, it changed, and now the owner would like it changed back.
I think that, that piece of property that I'm, that I'm talking about was part of Farrell's trailer park, and I think they just put trailers there willy-nilly, and nobody ever questioned them there. That's what I'm curious about. And when they removed this crossing at Fourth Street, they had to give us access, and they just kind of carved alongside the bank and said, "There you go." Just, just around the trailers and didn't set up a proper road or, or wherever.
Yeah, time for me to answer that question.
Okay, so I have to say for now.
Thank you, Mr. Pocawell. Is there any comments from the public second time on this OCP Amendment bylaw number 2086? And it's 903 Farrell Road. And for third and final time, any comments from the public on OCP Amendment bylaw number 2086? That's 903 Farrell Road. And hearing none, I close this public hearing. Thank you. So moving right into the regular council meeting of August the 11th. Next item on the agenda is announcements from the mayor, but I would, I would like to just take a couple of minutes. We've done our repairs to the Sewage Lagoon over two months ago, and we've had some of the warmest weather that we've had in a few years. Sewage Lagoon seems to be working without a hiccup or anything else coming from it. And I think that what I'd really like to do is thank the city staff that worked on it, especially Doug Pendergast and his crew, who lived and breathed Sewage Lagoon for quite a few months. I'd like to thank the design consultants that finally came up with the answers that, that saw the Sewage Lagoon getting fixed. And of course, Ike Thomas and Derek Amenoski for their roles in the leadership. We, we sit around the table here and we make, we make decisions based on the information. We adjust budgets and twist grams arm to figure out where the money's going to come from, how it's going to get done. But, but it's all these other people that actually live and work and get it done. And I just wanted to say that it looks like we're done. It was like a huge issue in the community for, for quite a while, and you don't hear anything about it. And I think it's the appropriate time to thank everybody that was involved, that came up with the solution, and it's working. And on behalf of all the community, thanks for the, the clean air that we have back. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda, Councilor English and Councilor Salz. All those in favor? Motion's carried. And I need a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 28. Councilor Nixon and Councilor Orlando. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Is there any business arising from those minutes? We have one delegation today, and Penny Page Britton is going to talk to us about Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program. Penny, you have... Thank you.
I'm here to discuss, to talk about the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program. The public support comes to council every year in March, and it came this year. And at that time, we requested some further information about the program and how the city played into this program. So I'm going to do that and answer any questions you may have. Back in 2007, the province of B.C. created the B.C. Climate Action Plan. And that was a plan that set a reduction target for greenhouse gas emissions for the province, as well as a number of initiatives, legislation, and programs to help the province move towards that reduction target. A couple of those items impact us, as, a lot of them impact us as residents, as individuals. A few of them were the revenue-neutral carbon tax that the province has, and a renewable energy component, renewable fuel component to our, to our gasoline and diesel, as well as some other programs that don't directly impact us. At that time, the province recognized, they estimated that local governments have control or influence over approximately 45% or more of greenhouse gas emissions. So there were some, some programs that came out for local governments to be looking at, at their municipalities and thinking about greenhouse gas emissions and how to reduce them. So one of these programs is the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program. And what this is, is a conditional grant program for municipalities that are signatories to the Climate Action Charter and who report publicly on progress annually on, on their actions that they're taking towards reducing emissions. So as part of the Climate Action Charter, the city of Revelstoke signed on to this charter in February of 2009. As a signatory to the Climate Action Charter, the city commits to working towards being carbon neutral in corporate operations, to measure and report on community greenhouse gas emissions, and to create complete, compact, energy-efficient communities. I should also say that the city of Revelstoke is also a member of the Departments for Climate Protection Program, which is a program administered through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in Canada. And as part of that program, we've completed milestones 1, 2, and 3 of 5 at both the community and at the corporate levels. So when we think about how to work towards reducing our, our energy consumption and our emissions, the first step is to measure them. As my role in the city, I maintain the city's corporate greenhouse gas emission inventory. So I gather data on the energy consumption in all of the different areas that are considered traditional services under municipality. And that includes our buildings, our municipal buildings, our fleet, our water, the wastewater, and our lighting, as well as contracted out services that are, are providing what's considered a traditional service, that being snow removal, recycling collection, which will change because of our now being through MMBC. And then, and then the next step is to, to look at ways to reduce emissions. There's been a number of projects that have happened over the past few years in the city, the heat reformation system at the pool being one of them. Changes at the water treatment plant that have significantly reduced our propane consumption there. And changes at the courthouse, so that we're now using less propane in, in heating the courthouse and using an electric boiler first before the propane boiler. And then as part of the CARE report, we annually look at the actions that have happened that year, or previous year, 2014 in this case, and then think about actions that can, that we would plan to occur in 2015 in these different areas in planning, buildings, energy generation, green space, solid waste, transportation, and water wastewater. And then I complete this report for the province, I think you should have in your package that, that came out in March, listing some of these, of these actions. So I've just picked a few from the report to highlight, but can talk about any of the other ones that you might want to. So key corporate actions that happened in 2014 around planning. The asset management policy was created. In buildings, there were light, lighting retrofits and some new DDC controls, which allow us to have a better handle on, on energy consumption. Under transportation, GPS was added to the city fleet. In the water category, calibration of our district meters occurred so that we can move towards a better understanding of water loss management practices. And proposed for 2015, we have the update of the OCP under planning. In solid waste, there's going to be research around options to divert organic household waste. Transportation to complete a fleet review. And underwater to complete a stormwater management plan. And at the community level, actions completed in 2014. Under green space, we completed a food security strategy. In buildings, the city provided education regarding the new building co-requirements. In transportation, there was revisions made to the transit service to improve ridership and efficiency. Under energy generation, the city issued an expression of interest to utilize bioenergy or waste biomass for creating bioenergy. And planned for this year, updating the OCP. Buildings continue to provide a Woodstoke Exchange rebate program. Transportation, installing electric vehicle charging station. And in water, to continue to provide water conservation education products. So this is the, some of, again, some of the actions. There's other ones in the report. And this was submitted to the province in, in March. And for 2014, the city was awarded with Level 2 recognition from the Joint Provincial UBCM Green Communities Committee for their accomplishments and successful efforts to measure and reduce corporate greenhouse gas emissions. So that is the completion of this year's CARE report. And I should add that the grant of the carbon tax directly paid by the city for this year was $26,000 as a result of, of part of the CARE program. Anybody has any questions about the CARE program or actions?
Councilor Brothers?
How do we decide from year to year what actions to take?
Well, we have a lot of plans. We have the, you know, the city's created a number of plans over the year. The Master Transportation Plan, the ICSP, the OCP, the C. And these plans recommend actions in different areas. And then looking at the spreadsheet that I create with the energy consumption, you can see, wow, this is kind of odd. What's going on here? And you start looking at, why do we have a higher energy consumption in this building? And, you know, look at what can be done in that building to, to improve on, on energy consumption. So a lot of it's the, the plans, I would say, that we currently have, as well as just sort of looking at every day, making, looking at an analysis. The province also puts out a list of actions completed by other municipalities. So I go through those and say, hmm, is this something that would be beneficial for the city of Revelstoke? And then discuss it with, with city staff, whether it's something that we would want to look at or not.
Do we have an overall long-term plan or strategy, or do we just sort of go... And should we have an overall long-term plan and strategy?
I think that that is what we have in our OCP and in our ICSP. And as we move forward with updating the OCP, that will also provide guidance into the future on, on different areas to focus on. Do you want to add to that, Mike?
Your Worship, the only other thing that I'd add is that as we develop asset management plans, particularly for buildings and for fleet, this will identify at what point we should be making those specific investments on energy reductions or more energy-efficient fleet, for example. And the focus on that would definitely be on the cost-benefit analysis of making those changes. Not just because something is more energy efficient, but the total life cycle of the cost of it, which would impact greenhouse gas emissions and net costs in the year.
Councilor Nixon?
Penny, so Level 2 just means we're making progress, is that correct? That's correct. And what's the next level? Good question. So when the Climate Action Charter came out in 2009, it committed municipalities to being carbon neutral in 2012. Carbon neutral, the process that the province created for carbon neutral for local governments is measure, reduce, offset. So what that means is to be carbon neutral, a municipality cannot create any greenhouse gas emissions as a, as a, as a result of their operations. So that would mean no use of gas, diesel, or propane. Now, we're not in a situation where we can completely remove fossil fuels from our operations today. So to be carbon neutral, it means that you would then need to purchase carbon offsets. So buy into other projects that are happening in another place that are reducing their emissions in the amount of the emissions that the city created. So this is, this was mandated through legislation for public sector organizations, but it was not legislated through the Climate Action Charter. So as 2012 came along, the province decided, well, there were a lot of municipalities that weren't willing to, wanting to purchase carbon offsets to make reductions in another place. They wanted to use that money locally. So the province said, "We're going to allow municipalities to say, 'We don't want to be carbon neutral right now. We're going to make progress.'" So at that time, I brought that to council, and council made the decision to make progress. But what we have done is we've set up a climate action reserve fund. So the funding that wouldn't be going to pay offsets is staying local for, for initiatives. So a good energy reduction, emission reduction initiative that, that may come up. And that's only been a couple of years of, of funding going into that reserve fund. But that does exist. And that is showing commitment from the city in moving forward with becoming carbon neutral and making progress.
Does the Energy Corp. fit into any of this?
No, because this is a local, yeah, it's, it, this is a, this is just the municipality. And the local, the, the RCEC was a bit ahead of its time. So the problem was that, that it was business as usual. And any reductions had to be, change, had to be a reduction from business as usual. Now, fortunately, RCEC was ahead of their time. Business as usual was already reducing our, our CO2. So we do not receive any credit from RCEC.
Councilor Brothers?
Do we have a plan to fund it annually, or maybe the council could let me know? Penny just mentioned that we fund it somehow. Do we fund it sort of ad hoc depending on the year? Or do we have a plan? And should we have a plan?
Your Worship, I answered that. There is month-end financial plan each year that goes into the reserve fund. It's called Carbon, it's a, it's a, it's a call down, but each department contributes to that reserve fund. And I think it's about $30,000.
Any other questions from council? Thanks, Penny. Is there any items of old business anybody would like to bring up? New business, we have the official community plan amendment by law number 2078, which is Beguette Road. Councilor Brothers?
The official community plan amendment by law number 2078 be adopted and just a motion to that.
And secondary, Councilor Orlando. Mr. Strachan, do you have any presentation on this?
Can I answer any questions, Councilor?
Maybe I could just give a bit of background?
Beautiful.
All right, so during the regular council meeting on May 12th of 2015, we agreed to proceed, or council agreed to proceed to amend the designation of Lot 1, Plan 4148 in the Beguette, from rural to residential, to, from rural residential to duplex residential. And this would allow for future subdivision to create one additional residential lot. And council has already gone to third reading on July 14th, 2015.
Any questions, comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. We have item C.
Your Worship, I moved that zoning, I'm actually B.
B.
No, I'm sure it...
I moved that zoning amendment by law number 2079 be adopted. And this is in regards to the same application and sort of had the same purpose from Councilor Brothers.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Duke. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. C.
So I think for 9C, we're going to be changing the motion here between the two representatives.
Read out the original motion.
Read the original motion? Yes. The development permit applications needed by Revelstoke Sandgravel Limited on the provincial crown land part of section 4, township 24, range 2, West Sitzberge and Cooten District 274, 322 West Side Road. The development of sand gravel extraction and process in site be approved subject to the following conditions. The applicant is to have registered professional biologist repair report on the subject property identifying any streams, waters, courses, and other features required permitting and/or reporting to federal and/or provincial agencies. And the site plan and biologist report are to be included with the development permit as Schedule 8, and that the corporate officer be authorized to issue the development permit once the above noted conditions have been satisfied.
Motion by Councilor Duke, seconded by Councilor Nixon. I would like to recommend that, that the resolution be deferred until council receives further information from staff with respect to environmental implications of the proposed development permit application. Is anybody inclined to make that defer motion for me? Councilor English, seconded by Councilor Salz.
Your Worship, do we need to debate the first time or no?
No, because we're just deferring that motion until we get more information. And I would like to ask Mr. Strachan to do his presentation.
Your Worship? As noted, the subject application is to afford development permit. Property, subject property is located on West Side Road. The application is to, subject property is zoning RR 60, little residential, 60 Act of District. The zoning district does allow for sandy gravel extraction. The applicant is proposed for a gravel pit that would be located approximately 210 meters from the edge of the Columbia River, which is a forested strip between the water and the proposed area, as well as a 55-meter buffer strip between the roadway and the edge of the development area. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Strachan? The motion on the floor is to defer the resolution and until council receives more information from staff with respect to environmental implications of the development permit application. Does anybody have any questions on the deferral of motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Next item, looks like item D to me, engineering. I'll do that. Thank you. Your Worship, make a motion that the city enters into the font practice and...
Make a motion that the city enters into a contract with Stan Tech to complete the front and whales of station design and engineering services.
Motion by Counselor Sols, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion of motion. Counselor Sols, did you want anything to add?
Just a bit of a review. The staffing put out R P's for contracts and Stan Tech, ones that came forward for qualified engineering firms. Were given that, this seems to be the best value for the money and the best proposal.
Any more comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Correspondents, Safe Spaces Revelstoke letter. Anybody inclined to make a motion?
At the Safe Spaces Revelstoke letter dated in July 2015, we refer to staff for consideration or report back to council.
Do you have a second for that? Counselor Sols, comments, questions, discussion?
I'm going to jump in and say something. I'm just, me personally, anyway, I don't see what the big deal is. I know that we have this thing about proclamations and we're concerned about other groups that are, could be asking it. I think this is a local group that's asking for requests, no different than Neighborhood Watch showing that City Hall is a Safe Spaces participant. I would rather that we just participated and let it happen, rather than going back and forth and spending more staff time. I think that everybody around the table supports the concept, they think it's a good idea. So we're breaking a little rule here and there. I would rather we just went ahead and did it. So we, sorry?
Just do a friendly amendment.
Would you like to do a friendly amendment that we just allowed it?
I'd like to do that, your worship. We're inclusive.
So friendly amendment by Counselor Nixon to approve it, seconded by Counselor Sols. We have to discuss and vote on the amended motion first, and then vote on a full motion afterwards. Right?
Or it's just a friendly amendment?
Friendly? Friendly is okay?
So as per your, I'm okay with it.
It's because I call it friendly, then it's okay?
Yeah. Who's, I'm okay with it as the, on the initial motion. Who's seconded it?
I'm okay with it as well, I got these stickers on it.
Everybody's okay. So we're just making, we're just going to do it if everybody says so. Any comments or questions on this? Counselor Wondell.
Yeah, of course I support this, and let's save some staff time, but I'll send it back for report. But I'd also like to support staff, they have to get a lot of these referrals and a lot of letters that they, you know, push away, and that's the policy, their current policy. So I don't think they did anything wrong. I think we're just making an easy decision.
Could let them off the hook, all right? Any more comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Easy peasy. Communications, first item is Public Works Committee Minutes. Comments there? Unfortunately, I have to jump in and say something here. Drop. There was one item on here talking about sewage tax frontage. I was the one that was approached by the resident and sent it around to Finance Department, Public Works. What this is, is a piece of property that backs onto Airport Way and is, frontage is on rail road. I think it's a little bit of an anomaly for our bylaw, which charges for properties that front onto sewage. I'd say that they back onto the sewage frontage, and I think that it's not a lot of money, and I don't think that we're treating this right, and I think that we should be not charging sewage frontage or backage in this case. So I'm not sure how council feels about it, if everybody's well aware of what this issue is, but I'm looking for comments from council, council.
Can I just ask, just for clarification, you mean they're getting double things?
No, no. It's because their property backs onto Airport Way, and there's a sewage trunk main going down Airport Way, they're getting charged a sewage tax frontage. The question is, is that would we hook up going down that back steep slope to hook onto it? And that's the intent of it, is that sewage line goes in front of your house, there's an opportunity for you to hook on it. If you're not hooked on, there's, it's the way the bylaw is written. The question really is, is that would we hook the sewage up this way? And probably not. You could hook it up, but it's, it would hook up the frontage of the house, which is on rail road, which does not have a sewage main going on it. So it's, shouldn't we be charging the sewage tax frontage on it when it's below their house and in the back of the property? Counselor Duke and Counselor Nixon.
The chair there, I had to staff, is this an anomaly? Do we have any other, is this the only lot? This is the situation here?
Oh, I'm sure there's going to be a few of them. I don't know if there's a lot, but there'd be a few. Counselor Nixon.
That was my question, do we have precedent such that other pieces of property are located here? Or are they helping itself?
Well, I think that because the sewage main was put in, the biggest expense was by the resort, we upsized the pipe going through Arrow Heights to have that opportunity to hook up and service Arrow Heights, but the bulk of it was actually paid by the resort. Whereas in most cases, you have a local service area where the residents get together, petition city, go through a process, put it in. Everybody knows that the sewage, the sewage trunk main is coming, whereas in this case, with this, with the trunk main going to the resort, a lot of residents didn't know that it was being, weren't, they weren't involved in the process, didn't vote on it. So, but a lot of these people are paying in, and Mike.
Your worship, the only difference is that these residents are not actually paying for the sewer, like hooking it up to the sewer. So when they, when they connect to the sewer, there is a fee that covers the cost of the actual construction of the sewer in front of their house, and that was established through the sewer rate.
But because they're not hooked up and it goes by their property, they're paying, I think it's $250, $280 here, I'm not, is that what we're talking about?
It's in that range, your worship. Where is the cost to actually hook up to the sewer could be in the thousands.
Yes. And I guess I didn't explain that part, but we're just talking about sewage tax frontage without being hooked up. So me personally, I don't think that it's right, and I don't think that it's fair. It's been going through process. I'm not sure how much council is, knows about it, aware of it. If staff need, council needs more information, we can send it back to staff one more time since we avoided sending the Safe Spaces request back. We've got a credit, we've got a credit sent back, so it's, or you guys can say, forget it in there, and we'll just carry on. Counselor Duke.
I would like to send it back to staff, only so that we have a better understanding of how many other losses it's going to affect and what the confidential cost would be.
Seconded for the motion. Counselor Nixon. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Back to communications. Advisory Plan Commission Minutes. Any comments here, Counselor Wondell?
Yeah, just a quick comment. In one of the items, I think it's H, there's an ongoing discussion about affordability and attainability on housing, file enforcement and all that. The reason I bring it up is just to point out that these discussions are ongoing in various committees, and it's probably something that we are, it is something we're continuing to work on, and I'd just like to bring it to everyone's attention.
Item C, Administration, Industry Partnership Communications. Do you want me to talk about that, or would you like to? Want me to talk about that? Couple of things that we're in there. One is we're setting up meetings at U B C M. The whole Mountain McPherson biking trails is still a topic. We've had meetings with Ministry of Forest, B C T S, B C Timber Sales, and we are working on a communication to go out to the public on the results of that as well. We are looking at getting a meeting with Minister of Forest, Mr. Thompson at U B C M in the third week of September, and be talking to him about that. So just a little bit of an update. Anything else in administration? Anybody would like to talk about?
Sorry, I meant to talk about this item. Which was administration? I was on the wrong item, but yeah, this is H in administration. Like the theme I was talking about.
Check requisition report. Business license summary. Parks, Recreation, Culture Month End Report. Questions from media?
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple. First one is with regards to the proposal for another gravel pit out on West Side Road. I note that you've sent this, you've sent this back, you've referred this back to staff for comment on the environmental implications of this pit. Will staff be asked to take a look at human health concerns? Because there are several.
Well, I guess council can ask staff anything that they like, and that's part of why it's going back, to make sure that we're comfortable in all the, any and all implications. And so I can't answer that specifically, but it's going back so that council has more information.
Any reason why you can't say yes or no on that?
Well, because I haven't talked with council about all the questions that they want to ask.
I see.
So, and I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you how they think and the questions that they're going to ask me.
Okay.
I'm not qualified.
Come on, I thought you were Superman.
I'm not Ravine.
Thank you very much, your worship.
That's it for you, David?
That's it.
Emily?
I had a question actually for Penny. I'm not sure if you can answer, but you said that there's a reserve fund for, for the future offset. Do you know how much it is?
$30,000, I think was the answer, wasn't it?
$30,000?
$30,000 a year we put in.
And that's since 2012?
We think yes. Penny?
The amount that was chosen was based on the cost to offset the emissions in that year. So if, the amount of emissions in corporate operations, the cost is about 20, the cost is $25 per ton. So that's where the number came from. So it would vary based on the emissions. I believe that is how it was done.
Right?
That's how we established the estimate of $30,000 a year. Just exactly how much is in this, right now? Do you have to refer to memory?
Sounds like 1,400 tons. Anything else, Emily?
I don't know. Are you having a comment on the gravel pit land being potential valuable development land?
Do I have a comment on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think it's a, I think it's a great piece of property, but as far as is there development slated or being contemplated, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, sure, for the gravel pit. What will the environmental impacts that entail?
Any question that council wants to look at? I can't, I can't, it's just, we're going to be looking at from all.
Clearly, just be giving your questions to Dean or Penny to answer, and.
And then it'll come back to this table, because that, that motion has just been deferred until council's satisfied with the information that it has to make a decision. You don't, Alex?
I believe so.
David?
I went for the question with regards to the gravel pit. Have you received many communications from the public with regards to this issue?
I would say we've, I received two.
Any other counselors?
I received two. Probably the same two.
Probably the same two from the same people.
They would, because I looked at the Google sent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion pursuant to section 91 K and 92 E of the community charter going counter. Counselor English, Counselor Sols, all in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.